If you'll bow your heads, I'll just offer a brief one. Heavenly Father, we pray that you would be with us tonight as we have much to discuss and go through. We pray that you would give us clear minds, generous hearts, kind spirits. We pray too for Mike Connell's family, that you would be with them, strengthen them through this time of illness in their family. We just ask you, Lord, again, to be with us here tonight. In your most precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand now and happily, well, I guess I have to call it to order first. Call it to order, and now we'll have the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you do the roll call, please?
Mike Connell. Chad Pollak.
Here.
Mindy Galabey.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallach.
Here.
Harrison Hammond.
Here.
All the council members except Councilmember Mike Connell.
Looking now for approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted at the minute.
Second. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Motion passes. And now, in regard to approval of the minutes, just keep in mind that we have two meetings to approve the minutes for our regular meeting on the 17th and the special meeting on the 23rd. So if someone does move to suspend the rules, we don't have to move to suspend the rules on the second one if that's how you want to do that.
We need two different motions.
We need two different motions, but you don't have to suspend the rules twice.
Okay. I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the March 17th, 2022, regular reading.
Moved by Larry, seconded by the frog over there, Steve. To suspend the rules and approve the minutes of the meeting on March 17th, all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passes. And in regard to the meeting of the 23rd.
Well, the rules are suspended. I move that we approve the minutes from the March 23rd, 2022, special meeting.
Second. Been moved by Larry, seconded by Chad, to approve the minutes from the March 23rd meeting. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nay. Motion passes. Moving on to pre-approved reports and presentations. Now, we were hoping to have a discussion, a presentation really, regarding a request from the buyer for Darling's Hardware, but I got an email from their attorney yesterday letting me know that Mr. Byram, who's the buyer, couldn't be here tonight. But they had, a few days back, sent information about their intention for displays on the sidewalk, and I think everybody got that. Is there anybody, council, that did not get those, that information? He also sent pictures.
I did not see any pictures.
Okay. These are.
Should have been on your back.
During your back.
Okay.
Oh, you got them?
Yeah.
Okay. The pictures are from other stores that they own and how they do the displays at other stores. Our zoning ordinance, Section 808, regarding outdoor displays, says that merchandise sold or displayed shall be accessory to the business conducted within the primary structure and shall be owned, leased, and operated by the same individual. Outdoor display and sales shall not be located in any required parking or circulation area, loading area, accessway, required setback, landscaping, or applicable clear vision triangle. And then it says, and the reason we're looking at this, outdoor sales and displays shall be prohibited on public land or public right-of-way, meaning the sidewalk, unless approved by city council. So that's why it comes to our attention to talk about that and see if you are in favor of approving that use. Past precedent has been that Darling's have done that, same thing he's talking about doing for, I don't know how long, a long time. And there are certain requirements that go on in this ordinance, saying, "Display areas shall maintain adequate clear area for safe pedestrian circulation along any pedestrian route." And that is controlled, I say controlled, I don't know if that's the right word, but it's stipulated by the Americans for Disabilities Act as to how far that has to be from the curb in, four feet.
Four feet.
To allow a wheelchair. So that would be something to consider. It says also, "The area devoted to outdoor display shall be kept in a neat and orderly manner at all times." And the next one is, "No items shall be stored, displayed, or stacked above a height of five feet." So if we do decide, if you decide that you are willing to approve this for them, I would suggest that your motion refer to that ordinance or those things in the ordinance. If you're not comfortable with doing a motion tonight or making a decision tonight, we can certainly put it to the next meeting. But I think Mr. Byram, Jim Byram, introduced himself in his email. This is Jim Byram, soon to be the new owner of the hardware store in Perry. And he goes on to talk about their history, they've done this for a long time, they have many other stores, and he goes into quite a bit of detail in how they do the outdoor displays in their other stores and sent pictures. So if you're open to discussion and a possible decision tonight, we can let him know, or again, however you want to move ahead with it.
I give you cover a couple of observations, not necessarily in a motion form right now. One would be that I would not be in favor of having bag material along the front of the store. Darling's kept theirs around the corner, I'd be fine with that, only because, you know, we all know that those bags periodically get broken open, potentially spilled on the sidewalk, and I wouldn't like to see that on Main Street if they didn't have the opportunity to get out and clean it up right away. And the other, when I look at some of the wheelbarrows or whatever, is they're, they're certainly close to above five feet, and I think that's to make certain we don't have anything that falls on anyone. In general, I don't have a problem with them having a tidy, orderly display that meets the criteria that Sue mentioned, but those would be my caveats.
I would agree, the bags should be on the side. They want to put lawn mowers and wheelbarrows out front, that, I don't see an issue with that. But I think you're right on that one pitch where you showed the lawn chair, that's pretty close to five or six feet, so. I would imagine it moves in every night. You know, idle or something.
That looks pretty, you know, it's not very tall.
Yeah.
I do wish some of our ordinance was a little bit more specific. Where on E, it just refers to it as safe pedestrian circulation along any pedestrian route. And there is a specific amount necessary, it's four feet.
Yeah.
And the, and the state, you said it.
Chairman did ADA.
Yes, ADA compliance.
When we, Mindy, if you recall, when we wrote, rewrote the sign ordinance, we did specify the A-frame signs have to maintain that four feet included, and I looked it up, the ADA reference. So I had no problem in putting that caveat, though it isn't in the ordinance right here specifically. We certainly have a precedent with it in the other portion of our zoning ordinance.
And that's a very key word. So keep in mind, precedence is being set here. If we find how we want them to do this, that same requirement would be passed on to someone else who might want to do the same thing.
He does mention in his letter that the palletized items, he would keep at the side of the store, and then grills and chairs and things would be on the 52 front edge.
And he also says that they would not interfere with the walkable space of the sidewalk and be brought into the store at night for the stuff up front.
Sounds like he's a reasonable person and understands the concerns that we have. Can he be here at a different meeting than?
He did not say that he could.
He could or could not.
When he sent this email, he said, "I will try to attend a meeting on the 7th," and then the attorney sent me an email yesterday and said he couldn't be here. I just, I don't know. I think with the amount of detail that he's put in here, I can't imagine that, unless you have questions that can't be answered by this, I don't see why we couldn't go ahead. But again, we can do whatever your pleasure is.
I think we can go ahead.
Yeah.
You're going to have to make up your own motion.
I made a motion that we can go ahead.
Why don't we let us think about that? Our discussion is over, and we'll wait and do the motion at the end of the meeting under any other business. That'll give us time to contemplate that.
No one has problems with words.
I know. Those are good words.
We have to keep it simple.
It's a good starting place, yeah, but that'll get us, get us all thinking about how that should be written. Okay, then we will move on unless there's other discussion that you want to have. We will move on. Two comments from the public. Do we have any public here who would like to make comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to department head reports. Megan, would you like to go first?
Hello. Couple updates for you. There's a couple of big projects I've been working on is the Uniform Chart of Accounts Changes that have come from the state of Michigan. I've been working with our software company on the Phase 3 of that chart change, so they have received my information and the new accounts we'll be using. They've imported it and tested the system, sent some reports back to me to review. I have a week and a half to get back to them, then we'll go on to the next phase of testing, integrating all of our modules that we have within the software, so I expect probably in the next month, month and a half, we'll be up and ready with our new chart of accounts. It won't have any impact, other than when you look at the budget, some numbers will change in the order, so it's just state of Michigan's way of making sure everyone's on the same path. I am working on our ARPA annual reporting. This is the report that originally told us would be due in October, it got bumped back to April 30th. They just released the reporting module on April 1st, so lots of time to get that done. It'll be very simple though, since we haven't actually spent any of the money yet and the project is still going on, so I'm working on that. The last bit of good news is that the constitutional revenue sharing funds that we receive every year, we get six payments a year. They're based on census numbers. Since the new census is out, that we will have a slight reduction in the amount of money we get in each of those payments. It had been projected that they were going to claw back the money from the last two years, from when the census numbers were issued, so 2020 to 2022. We were looking at losing about $20,000, they were going to subtract it from our April payment. And Senate Bill 565 for Public Act 53 has been passed, so they were going to hold all cities, villages, and townships harmless, so we'll still receive our $20,000 per usual. Actually, it'll be $29,000, so. And that's what I have.
Yay.
Yes.
Thank you, Megan. John?
Let's see, last week, we received the new F-350 dump truck that I ordered back in July, I think 2nd of '21. Waiting on getting that letterd before you see that on the streets. Public Works is going to start doing some interior inspections on service lines, we'll be handing out letters. It won't be everybody in town, just stuff that we don't know. Eagle's requiring this. I'm just asking for the residents' cooperation. We'll make appointments. Probably I'll stay after in the evening so that we can accomplish that, and maybe one of the other guys. I do have a guy starting, I don't want to jinx myself in case anything, but on the 18th, he's starting in Public Works. The exterior of the library is about 90% complete. I think they kind of finished up a little bit of the trim work and stuff, so I thought that was looking good if anybody's seen.
It's light today.
The water tower, I met with Dixon today. They're still waiting on a few submittals to come in from the painting company, and then we'll have our pre-construction meeting and hopefully get it rolling. You know, am I looking at probably in May? Depends on how the weather is, if it keeps, you know, can't paint in the rain, so. Warms up and stays dry for a couple weeks, that's what we need. I think that's, must someone have something for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
I received a phone call from the deputy commander from the VFW post verifying that they are a go for a May 28 Memorial Day parade, 11:00 a.m. We haven't had that for a couple of years now, so I was glad that they got ahold of me to let me know that and that they were willing to put that together. So that's 11:00 a.m. on the 28th. Lineup will be 10:00 a.m. Anyone interested should contact the VFW if they have a unit they want to participate in the parade. Do not call City Hall, we do not organize that. I think it was last month that we got the new car. We are still waiting to have that stickered. I went a couple of weeks ago to have that all applied or decal, and they put the first one on, and the guy who printed it said, "Ooh, that kind of looks purple." It wasn't blue, it was purple. So something was going on with their printer, and I checked with them two days ago, and they're still having issues with their printer, so. Once they get that fixed, then they'll print new decals and we'll get those and stuff. Really, that's all I have, unless you folks have any questions for me.
Where does the lineup start? Do you know? By the school?
It is, I believe it'll be Keene Street.
Okay.
The VFW kind of lines up right in front of the VFW, but as far as leading the parade goes, in all the additional units, in the past, it's been on Keene Street.
I was just asking, I'm just trying to figure, you know, if they're keeping it the same or if they want to change where they're lining it up.
I hope they don't. It's really inconvenient, and honestly, there's no other place for them to line up because they'll be outside of our traffic points at that point. They really can't go any further north, so. Yeah, I, I will probably have a say in that if they want to do it different, so I would say it's Keene Street at this point. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Devin?
I just wanted to let council know, I let the mayor know with the census. Also, it affects our registered voters, the redistricting of all of the elected officials at the higher level, and there are changes in our district, which means that clerks are required to send out the ID cards to every single registered voter. We currently have 1,637 registered voters. I am choosing to outsource all over the state, that they have different vendors. I have three vendors. I will present them to you if you'd like to know sooner what I have. Great. The state, although they're saying, "Get ready, get ready," they're still not ready for us, because of course they have the experts and all the information for mailing and such for these vendors or for us to be able to mass mail. Is there any questions or does anybody disagree that I'm thinking about using a vendor? I just think it's more practical. They've got the lower postage because they have the mass mailing already. Where the average it's going is just under 1,200 to 900 is the three quotes that I have so far. So once I get more details and the state is ready to go, then I'll bring the council for a possible approval of one of the vendors, if that's okay. Of course, the reminder that there is a mayor seat expiring December 1st. We have three, four-year council seats that are expiring December 1st and one partial term. And the way our charter sets is that this will, this has to be, petitions have to be pulled now, deadline for the petition to be turned in, in atta davids, is April 19th by 4 o'clock. And the reason is, is that if there is an extreme amount of people running, we have to see if we would go to a primary. My experience, I've never seen it go to then, but just so, because a lot of people probably have seen that we're always on November, this is why it is so early, because there is always that one-time chance that people come out of the woodwork and want to be in these chairs. If you have any questions, please call my office. And also, I have them with me when I'm in a council, you can talk to me after the council meeting, or the petitions are upstairs, available for everybody. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mayor reports, I just wanted to point out that the Greater Langsberg, let me say that again, Greater Langsberg Community Recycling Center is having a grand opening. They have information on our website. It is Sunday, April 24th, from 2:00 to 4:00, to show off their new building. It is really nice if you haven't been there. Everything's inside, you drive through to drop off your recycling. They unload it out of your car, you put your $4 donation in the box, and the other, you don't even get out of your car to do that, so. It's a nice facility. They have planned refreshments and live music and a tune, if you're interested. The SEDP, Brett Jones, has let me know that there's legislative grant money available, and he is going to submit an application on behalf of the city to see if we can get additional or any money toward the water extension project that we've been trying to fund with grants, just so you're aware that that's being sent in. I have been attending some financial webinars that have been put on by the Michigan Treasury and by MML, and they've been very informational. They do have availability to print off the slides from the webinar, if anybody's interested in that, let me know and I'll print those off for you. I did give you a copy of the letter that our ordinance enforcement officer sent out rescinding the dumpster fencing requirement. And I think that's everything I had. So we will move on to committee reports.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start, that's okay. Actually, one of the things that truly committee is Planning Commission. I thought I'd take just a moment and update everybody on a couple of things from the Planning Commission. As I think I mentioned before, the Planning Commission is looking into embarking on a rewrite of the master plan for the city, and we've become aware that the MEDC, or Michigan Economic Development Corporation, may have some resources available to help us in that venture. I've spoken with Justin, first off, Planning Commission, Monday night, decided that they would like to get some more information. I've contacted Justin Horvath in our area, and Justin's going to help us, help the Planning Commission link with Chuck Donaldson to try to have him personally attend if possible, the Planning Commission's May 2 meeting. And I'd encourage, as many of the council members can, participate or at least observe that, because one of the things, if we do decide to move forward with that activity and their support, there will have to be a resolution passed by council to start that process. And so it would be helpful, from an educational perspective, as the Planning Commission learns about it, that as many of the rest of us as possible come and observe. I'll keep you posted as soon as I know for certain that Mr. Donaldson's available to attend that. Hopefully, he'll at least be able to do it by Zoom, if not in person.
Oh, great.
Moving on to the ordinance committee, the good news is, oh, good news, I'll say, but the good news is that later on in the agenda, we will be doing some first readings of the medical marijuana ordinance activity that's been going on for quite some time, and also we'll be looking at some charter amendment activity. I will mention that there was one charter amendment that we discussed at our last meeting that was brought to our attention by Tom Bridges, that right now our charter requires that we do or have completed an annual audit of our books, and his suggestion was potentially that we go to an every other year, which is what the state requirement is, to try to help save the city a little bit of money. And after some research, and Megan doing some research for us, we discussed at our last committee meeting that we would recommend staying with our annual audit, at least at this point in time, that by the time we went to a two-year, that the work involved potentially to catch up that first year may not save as much money, and if there was ever anything found, the difficulty to go back and identify it correct, it wouldn't be worth the potential savings, so that one will not come forward for a specific resolution. One of the other things that we took around and talked about as a committee is something that we're labeling cleanup peri-activity. We've, as everybody's aware, we have done some work in the past with updating our ordinances and updating our enforcement activity for both our codified, that's willing, that's zoning, excuse me, zoning ordinance enforcement, and to that end, we are embarking on a cleanup peri-activity that's basically being kicked off. Sue has drafted a letter that is going out to all of the residents of the city, has been posted on our website already. I won't take the time right now to go through and read it in detail, but fundamentally says, "Let's try to put our best face forward as an org of city. We've got a garage sale activity coming up in May, and let's try to see if we can spiff the city up a bit for all of our non-residents, as well as residents that come in to visit for the garage sale, and for just the veteran of the city in its entirety." It ties in, the citywide cleanup week that we've historically had right after the garage sale that will be highlighted and going on, and unfortunately, if there are, our ordinance enforcement officer will be identifying particular opportunities that need to be addressed, and we'll embark on our enforcement process that we have defined, and if the issues persist after the cleanup week has occurred in the latter part of May, there will be citations issued as a part of that. there will be citations issued as appropriate to try to help shore up our activities. Our next meeting of the committee will be April 27th to the Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. to continue our ordinance activity, continue to discuss the activity around our cleanup efforts and get back to a couple of ordinance revision proposals that kind of got put on hold as we were dealing with the medical marijuana issues. Comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. There are any other committee reports?
Parks met, last Thursday?
Yes.
Thank you. We did move the, we had a tentative Parks Work Day for the equipment at Jubilee on the 21st, but we had to change it to the 21st, fair try to the 14th because I was reminded by Chad's wife that it's, this is a grad day weekend.
Oh, yes.
So, we did put in place the 14th of May, we'll have as many volunteers as can, we can get to finish whatever equipment hasn't been completed by DBW, especially they will do the mulch and things like that. So, so anybody who can join and help would be wonderful. Do you want to meet us at the time?
Well, if you don't, you can tell us later.
Around 8:00 at Jubilee Park. And as long as someone can work for half an hour, I'll take it. Someone can work all day, I'll take it.
Should they bring their own rakes and things like that?
They can bring their own hand tools. I will have some, as many as, I have more than most, but I won't have everything. So.
Should I call it the Jubilee Exercise?
Yeah, the Fitness Work Day.
Okay. Thank you.
And once it's installed, then we will map it and get quotes for signs for all that.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Any other committees that have reports? Then we'll move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
I moved that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Steve, seconded by Bob to approve the bills and that payment be authorized. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, so let's move into new business. And our first item is possible adoption of the MDOT resolution. And I think that's from Kyle. So, if you do have questions about that, Kyle's the person to ask.
Feel free to ask. I'm not going to guarantee I have any answers. I've never seen this before. This is something new that MDOT sent me. I have historically applied for an annual permit through MDOT to be allowed to put in advance notices through them, through their online system. And this apparently is an added caveat to that.
So, they requested it?
They sent it to me.
Wow. I thought it was a good idea.
It's a bunch of words on paper.
Yeah. Words that mean, especially to handle gestures like this. So. We just need a motion, right?
We do.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolution as presented, which authorizes a police chief and superintendent of public works to apply for necessary permit to work within the state highway right of way on behalf of the municipality.
A second.
There's a motion on the floor made by Bob, seconded by Chad, in regard to this MDOT resolution. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Our next item is possible adoption of a resolution for commitment to MDOT grant. And this is something that John has brought to us.
Yep. So, this will be, we did get a grant, I'll call it two years ago. Last year, we didn't. We have an opportunity to apply again. I have the same streets, so we're just going to resubmit. There'll probably be a little changes. I did increase some of the, but I don't know exactly what asphalt's going to be. So, unfortunately, I have to bring the resolution back to increase that MDOT says, but I have enough in, this would be a 50% grant. So, it cuts our costs directly in half virtually, other than some engineering fees that Wolverine would get. If we don't get the grant, we don't pay. Lamb Street needs a little more structural work. That's kind of one of the reasons I felt using an engineering firm on some of these would be beneficial.
And this is in the proposed budget going forward, I think?
Yes, I have the, like, the full cost if we have to do it, as what I speculate stuff's going to be. So, this would be a substantial savings if we get the grant. Either way, we do that.
If we get the grant, that'll be done this year?
No, it'll be in '23, '20. Yeah. Because MDOT's fiscal year starts in October, starts and ends, you know, so it's, we're on different.
Well, maybe asphalt and cheaper.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, but inflation will slow down.
I move that we accept and adopt the resolutions presented, which commits the city to provide $90,000 towards MDOT matching grant to construct resurfacing on West 3rd Street, East 1st Street, and Lamb Street.
Second. There's a motion on the floor as read by Larry, seconded by Mindy, regarding the resolution for commitment to the MDOT grant. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is discussion regarding scheduling a budget workshop. I did send you all a letter out, an email. Megan has come up with a wonderful idea. I think you're all probably in favor of that. But we've continued to talk and as I've gone to these webinars and she has also done several of them, every time I say to her, oh, wait till you hear what I learned, she said, oh, yeah, I already got that. So, she's, she's on top of it. But we need another workshop. There, there's some things we need to talk about. We need to set some goals. Not necessarily huge things for this budget, but we need to do some things for this budget to be ready, to be in a better position for the budget after that. So, I would, I would like us to get together again. If you're all in favor of that, if we could come up with a date, I'd appreciate it.
Unfortunately, it's going to be an evening for me.
Evening.
As late as possible. Seven, six, somewhere in there.
Okay.
This is second.
Okay. So, seven, seven would be best for Bob. Anybody have any thoughts? I, I have trouble doing Tuesday evenings because I have a commitment on those evenings.
As do I.
All right. So, not on a Tuesday evening?
I think that's your golf day.
That's my golf day. Golf hasn't started yet. April 19th.
Yeah. It's coming right up, isn't it? So, if we look at Monday, the 18th, Wednesday, the 20th, or, no, we don't want to do Friday. So, then to the next week, April 25th, or Wednesday, 27th, or that week, we could actually do Thursday, the 28th, because the meeting is the 21st. Does, does that work for people?
Wednesday, the 27th through, well, through the weekend, I will not be here.
Okay. So, looking at Monday, the 25th, how does that look?
That works.
Monday, the 25th. Okay, Monday, the 25th it is, 7:00.
That's Saturday.
Okay. Thank you very much. Devin, if you would post that or whatever it is you have to do, let people know. Oh, I have to do a special.
Will you do, you're thinking out to by me?
Yep, I will. Fill out form.
Thank you.
Yep. You got it. Rob Kehoe, lost his plumbing inspector and found another guy fairly quickly, John Pomaville or Pomaville, P-O-M-A-V-I-L-L-E. He is a master plumber, lives in Diamond Dale. He is a full-time plumbing inspector for the city of East Lansing. But he is willing to do part-time out here in Perry. I talked with him on the phone. He panicked at first and he said, no, no, I don't want another full-time job. And I said, no, no, I'm not offering you one. So, anyway, he is interested in coming out here. Rob is asking if we would appoint him and have you guys approve him. So, I am appointing him, looking for your approval of that.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of John Pomaville as plumbing inspector under the direction of the city's building inspector.
Second.
Who is that, Bob? Okay. Moved by Larry, seconded by Bob to approve the appointment of John Pomaville. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we're on to the resolution to place charter amendments on the November 2022 ballot. And I think this is number four. Larry, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you. Is that correct? It is amendment number four?
Amendment number four that deals with the, how we handle the annual budget.
And approval of the budget.
And approval of the budget.
So, looking for a resolution to place that on the ballot.
Can you throw all this, Devin?
If it gets short, you do not have to read a whole resolution, but because transparency is asking again about.
Okay. The answer is yes. I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. The Perry City Council resolves that the Perry City Charter shall be amended as follows. Charter amendment proposal number four, section 6.3, adoption of the budget tax limit. Not later than the last meeting in May, the council shall by resolution adopt the budget for the next fiscal year and shall provide for levy of the amount necessary to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes, which amount shall not exceed 2% or 20 mils of the assessed valuation of all real and personal property subject to the taxation by the city. The current charter section being altered by this amendment provided as follows. Section 6.3, adoption of budget tax limitation. Not later than the last meeting in May, the council shall by ordinance adopt the budget for the next fiscal year and shall provide by resolution for a levy of the amount necessary to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes, which amount shall not exceed 2% or 20 mils of the assessed valuation of all real and personal property subject to taxation by the city. The ballot language for the proposed amendment shall be as follows. Charter amendment proposal number four. The charter amendment is initiated, excuse me, is intended to provide greater flexibility to the city council in reviewing and approving budget, city budgets. Shall the amendment as proposed be adopted? Yes or no? The city clerk shall transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the governor of the state of Michigan for approval of the proposed amendments, MCL 117.22, and transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the attorney general of the state of Michigan for approval of proposed ballot language for the proposed amendments, MCL 117.21. Point five, the proposed amendment shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the city of Perry at the general election to be held on the city, on November 8th, 2022, when the city clerk is directed to give notice of the election and notice of the registration that may be prescribed by law and to do all things and to provide all supplies necessary to submit the charter amendments to a vote of the electors as required by law. Six, the proposed charter amendment shall be published in full, together with existing charter provisions amended as required by law.
Looking for a second. It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Bob to accept and adopt the resolution as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Larry, for reading that.
That changes it from by ordinance to by resolution.
It took me a couple of times to read it and see what the difference was.
Good job. Next on our agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation to zoning ordinance amendments.
I move that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation as presented to amend zoning ordinance.
Second. Been moved by Bob, seconded by Chad, that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation as presented to amend the zoning ordinance. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And next, we'll move into the possible first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment number 360.
I do have one more question that I forgot to ask you before. Number seven of violations of enforcement or something, under D, number seven, that statement seems to be very vague. Facility is determined to be by the city to have become a public nuisance.
Are you on the next one?
Am I on the next one? I don't know. 361, isn't it? Oh, yep, I am. I'm sorry. My fault.
That's all right. Go ahead with your, go ahead with your question, though.
That was ordinance number 361. It was the only question that I forgot to ask. It just says the facilities, the facility pays 9.9 and it's under penalties and enforcement. License issued under this chapter may be suspended or revoked for any of the following violations. And there's list one through nine. Number seven is my question. The facility is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance. Seems to be very subjective. I think that, you know, I can say my neighbor's dog barking is a nuisance.
So, we have a nuisance ordinance that we should be filing?
Correct, but it is, it's not like dog barking.
Yes.
It's, in my, it's vague. If your dog barks at all, if you, the way you read that, it could be a violation of that ordinance. That's all I'm just, it's very subjective.
Subjective, but we reference the city official to make that determination opposed to, a neighbor makes a complaint that they didn't like the color of the paint on the building or whatever, so.
That's all, I just wanted to bring that up. It just, it seems very, you know.
It, it is, when you start defining nuisances and we're dealing with that and overall, ordinance enforcement and the nuisance abatement activity, it is somewhat subjective and I honestly don't know how to completely take all of that out of it.
Neither do I. I just wanted to pose that question to the council that, or statement, whatever you want to say, that it just seems like what I think is a nuisance may not be a nuisance to you or, you know, anyone else, so.
I think, though, that the way that it's stated is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance. The city being the proper representative, ordinance enforcement officer, or police officer, depending on what type of nuisance it is. depending on what type of nuisance it is, would make that determination, not just somebody calls the mayor and the mayor says, "Oh, yeah, that's a nuisance." No, it says, determined by the city, is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance.
Okay. I answer all my other questions, Ash, I agree with your thought.
Okay, there you go. Anybody else have questions before we get on with the business at hand? Okay. Then, the purpose of this is to do a first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment number 360. We do have to read it all the way through. Whoever starts will be the person making the motion, but we can take turns in reading without adversely affecting that.
That one is three pages?
Yeah, that one's not very long.
I move that zoning ordinance amendment number 360 regarding medical marijuana and which reads as follows, be placed on the agenda for next, for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains, the city of Perry zoning ordinance is amended by deleting sections 3.31 and 3.32 in their entirety and replacing the same with the following section 3.31 and section 3.32 inserted in their stead and by amending table 8.02, section 2.14 and section 15.07 as follows. A, section 3.31, medical marijuana provisioning center. This section shall apply to all medical marijuana provisioning centers proposed to be established after the effective date of this ordinance. A, medical marijuana provisioning centers shall be commenced, conducted, operated, and utilized in accordance with the established city of Perry zoning and codified ordinances and in compliance with the MMFLA, MMA, MRTMA, MTA, and applicable state and federal laws. B, proof of a surety bond in the amount of $50,000 with the city listed as the obligi-
Obligie.
Obligie to the guarantee performance by applicant of the terms, conditions, and obligations of this chapter in a manner and surety approved by the city attorney or in the creation of an escrow account as follows. One, the account must be provided by a state or federally regulated financial institution and/or other financial institution. Two, and the account must be for the benefit of the city to guarantee performance by licensee in compliance with this chapter and applicable by law. And, three, the account must be in the amount of $20,000 and in a form prescribed by the city attorney. C, consumption of marijuana in any public place within the city of Perry is prohibited except as provided by law, state law, I'm sorry. D, no medical marijuana provisioning center shall permit the sale, consumption, or serving of alcohol.
Would you like Larry to take over for a minute?
Sure.
B, section 3.32, marijuana adult use establishment. No marijuana establishments shall be commenced, operated, or utilized in any zoning district on or from any property within the city of Perry except for the medical marijuana provisioning centers as designated in section 3.31. C, Perry city zoning ordinance, chapter eight, section 3.02, the table of uses to be amended to repeatedly use a medical marijuana dispensary and replace the following. Table 8.02, table of uses for commercial districts. Use medical marijuana provisioning center, CBD or central business district, not permitted. B1, special land use or SLU, mixed use, MXD, special land use. D, Perry city zoning ordinance, section 2.14, definitions M shall be amended to insert the following definition after Marina and before Master Plan, marijuana establishment. Marijuana establishment means a marijuana grower, marijuana safety compliance facility, marijuana processor, marijuana microbusiness, marijuana retailer, marijuana secure transporter, or any other type of marijuana-related business licensed by the state of Michigan. E, Perry city zoning ordinance, section 2.14, definitions M shall be amended to insert the following definition after Master Plan and before migrant agricultural labor housing, medical marijuana provisioning center. Medical marijuana provisioning center means a commercial or business entity located in the city that is licensed or approved to operate by the state pursuant to the MMFLA and is licensed by the city that sells supplies or provides marijuana to registered qualified patients only as permitted by state law. Medical marijuana provisioning center is defined in the MMMA, MMFLA, and MTA includes any commercial property or business where marijuana is sold in conformance with the state law and regulation. Excuse me, a non-commercial or non-business location used by a primary caregiver to assist a qualifying patient is defined in the MMMA, MMFLA, or MTA connected to the caregiver through the state's marijuana registration process in accordance with the MMMA, MMFLA, and MTA is not a medical marijuana provisioning center for purposes of this chapter. MMFLA means the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.2701. That's tweaked as amended from time to time. MM, M means the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, tweaked as amended from time to time. MRTMA means the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL 333.27951, tweaked as amended from time to time. MTA means the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901, tweaked as amended from time to time.
Would you like me to take over? F, Perry city zoning ordinance, section 15.07. Specific standards shall be amended to insert the following definition after EE, wireless communication towers. FF, medical marijuana provisioning centers. One, medical marijuana provisioning centers shall be located within a permanent building as defined by section 2.3. Two, no medical marijuana provisioning center shall be located within 1,000 feet of a public school or library. This distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest property line to the parcel of land upon which the proposed medical marijuana provisioning center is to be located to the nearest boundary of public school property or public library. Three, medical marijuana provisioning centers shall not be expanded or approved in any manner requiring a building permit without first applying for and receiving the approval of the city of Perry zoning administrator, planning commission, and the city of Perry council. Four, medical marijuana provisioning centers are not permitted in A1, R1A, R1B, RT, RM, PUD, NFO, MHP, CBD, I1 or I2. Medical marijuana provisioning centers permitted in B1 and mixed, MXD. Five, parking requirements of one parking space per 300 square feet of usable retail floor area and in conformance with section 13.5. Six, buildings must be constructed in a manner that provides unobstructed visibility to all areas of the building and parking lots. Seven, if the site abuts a residential district, screening shall be provided along that property line. Grass, plant materials, and sight obscuring fences or walls of an appropriate type approved by the planning commission and in accordance with section 13.3 shall be placed within the buffer strip. Eight, any sign or signs shall comply with the requirements of this ordinance and be approved at the discretion of the planning commission. Nine, hours of operation are limited to Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ten, outdoor lighting shall be dark, sky compliant, and sufficient to illuminate all sides of the building without creating a nuisance to surrounding properties or roadways. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from date of publication. Looking for a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Bob, he'll be louder.
Use handicap.
All those in favor of the motion that is now on the floor as made by Larry and seconded by Bob, or, excuse me, made by Mindy and seconded by Bob, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for helping with that. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 361 regarding medical marijuana. Do we have any questions before we move ahead with that? Whoever makes the motion can start with the reading and then we can break it up again.
I'll start, Mindy, and you can.
Sure.
Okay. I move the ordinance amendment number 361 regarding medical marijuana and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. City of Perry ordains, the city of Perry codified ordinance concerning marijuana establishments, chapter 860 shall be and is hereby amended as follows. Chapter 860 is hereby repealed and below revised. Chapter 860 is submitted in its place and stead. Chapter 860 marijuana, 860.01 marijuana establishment, cross-references possession, use, and transportation of marijuana, see general offense 622.01. 860.01 marijuana establishments, except as provided in this chapter, all marijuana establishments are prohibited, including but not limited to recreational marijuana establishments within the boundaries of the city of Perry. No marijuana establishments shall be commenced, operated, or utilized in any zoning district on or from any property within the city of Perry except for medical marijuana provisioning centers as designated in chapter 860.2. 860.2 purpose, A, it is the intent of this chapter to authorize the establishment of one medical marijuana provisioning center in the city of Perry and provide for the adoption of reasonable restrictions to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community at large, retain the character of the neighborhoods, and mitigate potential impacts on surrounding properties and persons. It is also the intent of this chapter to affirm that the city of Perry is upholding its prohibition of all other marijuana establishments other than those specifically authorized by this chapter. It is also the intent of this chapter to help defray administrative and enforcement costs associated with the operation of a medical, excuse me, of a marijuana facility in the city through imposition of an annual nonrefundable fee as defined by the resolution of city council on each medical marijuana facility license. Authority for the enactment of this provision is set forth in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101. Further, the city does not intend that permitting the regulation under this chapter be construed as a finding that such facilities comply with any law. B, the city of Perry confirms, excuse me, considers it necessary and pertinent to authorize the establishment of one medical marijuana provisioning center facility through a limited application period and subsequent lottery system drawing to be specified by resolution of city council at the time of such application period and lottery shall occur. C, nothing in this chapter is intended to grant immunity from criminal or civil prosecution, penalty, or sanction for the cultivation, manufacture, possession, use, sale, or distribution of marijuana in any form that is not in compliance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, initiated law of 2008, MCL 333.26421. The Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101. The Marijuana Licensing Act, MCL 333.27901, and all other applicable rules promulgated by the state of Michigan. D, as of effective date of this chapter, marijuana remains classified as a Schedule I controlled substance under the Federal Controlled Substance Act 2.1 U.S.C., section 801, which makes it unlawful to manufacture, distribute, or dispense marijuana or possess marijuana with intent to manufacture, distribute, or dispense marijuana. Nothing in this chapter is intended to grant immunity from any criminal prosecution under federal laws. E, all medical marijuana facility license holders must comply with all state building codes, including but not limited to plumbing, mechanical, electrical, building energy, and fire codes, which includes the city zoning ordinance as applicable under law.
Mindy, you wanna take over?
Yep.
860, opening definitions. For the purposes of this chapter, A, any term defined by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, shall have the definition given in the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. B, any term defined by the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, shall have the definition given in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. C, any term defined by the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901, shall have the definition given in the Marijuana Tracking Act. Conditional license means a document endorsed by the city which only recognizes that an entity or person has submitted a valid application to the city seeking to own and operate a business related to and regulated by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act and has been selected as the winner of the city's application selection lottery process. A conditional license grants no authority to possess, sell, market, or deal marijuana in any fashion, whether for retail trade, personal, and/or patient medical use. Grower means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that cultivates, dries, trims, or cures and packages marijuana for sale to a processor or provisioning center. License means a permit authorized by the city conveying authority to an entity or person to own and operate a business related to and regulated by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Licensee means a person holding a state operating license issued under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101. Marijuana or marijuana means that term has defined in the Public Health Code, MCL 333.1101, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, and the medical, I'm sorry, the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901. Marijuana facility means an enterprise at a specific location at which a license- Marijuana facility means an enterprise at a specific location at which a licensee is licensed to operate under Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL three 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 point two seven one oh one. Including a marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana provisioning center, marijuana secure transporter, or marijuana safety compliance facility. The term does not include or apply a primary caregiver or caregiver as that term is defined in the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL three 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 point two six four two one. Medical marijuana establishment license means a valid medical marijuana establishment license issued by the city pursuant to the provisions of this chapter and state law. Municipal license means a license issued by a municipality pursuant to the MMFLA that allows a person to operate marijuana establishments in that municipality. Person means an individual, corporation, limited liability company, partnership, limited partnership, limited liability partnership, limited liability, limited partnership, trust or other legal entity. Processor means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in Michigan that purchases marijuana from a grower and that extracts resin from marijuana or creates a marijuana foods product for sale and transfer in packaged form to a provisioning center. Provisioning center means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that purchases marijuana from a grower or processor and sells, supplies, or provides marijuana to registered qualifying patients directly or through the patient's registered primary caregivers. Provisioning center includes any commercial property where marijuana is sold at retail or registered qualifying patients or registered primary caregivers. A noncommercial location used by a primary caregiver to assist a qualifying patient connected to the caregiver in accordance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL three 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 point two six four two one, is not a provisioning center for purposes of this chapter. Safety compliance facility means a licensee that is a commercial entity that receives marijuana from a marijuana facility or registered primary caregiver, tests it for contaminants and for tetra-
Tetrahydrocannabinol.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And other cannabinoids-
Yes.
Returns the test results and may return the marijuana to the marijuana facility. Secure transporter means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that stores marijuana and transports marijuana between marijuana facilities for a fee. State license means a license issued by the department that allows a person to operate a medical marijuana establishment within the state.
What do you think, Steve? Can I give it a go?
I'll try for a little bit, yes. Eight six zero point zero four. Authorization of facilities and fee. A. The maximum number of each type of medical marijuana facility allowed in the city shall be as follows. Facility, number. Grower, prohibited. Processor, prohibited. Provisioning center, one. Safety compliance facility, prohibited. Secure transporter, prohibited. B. City council shall review the number of facilities allowed at one, at the one-year mark of implementation to reevaluate and determine if the number allowed needs to be adjusted. From that point on, every three years, city council shall review the maximum number of each type of marijuana facility allowed and determine whether this maximum number should be changed. The review and its findings shall be recorded in the minutes of the relevant meeting of the city council. C. A refundable, nonrefundable fee shall be paid at the time of license renewal by each marijuana facility licensed under this chapter in an annual amount as set by resolution of the city council. D. The single provisioning center license shall be awarded via lottery. An application fee of five thousand dollars shall be paid in full at the time that each application is submitted. Applications shall be accepted for a thirty-day calendar period to be determined by the city council resolution. All applicants with fully completed applications received within the application period will be entered into a lottery drawing on the day previously set by city council resolution and shall be open to the public. After city council's review and approval of the lottery results, the winner will be awarded a conditional provision, a conditional provisioning center license and will move forward in the formal licensing and approval process. The first and second runners-up will maintain their lottery ranking positions in the event the winner is unable to complete the overall approval process within the approved time period. All other applicants in the lottery will receive a refund of two thousand five hundred dollars within thirty days of the lottery completion. Should the first and/or second runners-up elect to withdraw at any time after the lottery is conducted, they will be refunded two thousand five hundred dollars within thirty days after their withdrawal is confirmed in writing to the city clerk. E. Should a provisioning center license be vacated or revoked, the city will hold a lottery to award the license to another applicant. The process shall mimic the steps outlined above, but would be limited to the number of vacated or revoked license or licenses available.
Very good. Anybody on this side of the room want to take over? You don't have to. It's absolutely voluntary.
I will.
Bob?
Eight six zero point five zero five. General location and operational requirements. A. Medical marijuana establishment shall be prohibited from being licensed and located on any parcel or lot within a residential zoning district as indicated on the city zoning map at the time of the license application. The entire parcel or lot upon which the medical marijuana establishment is located shall be zoned for medical marijuana establishments. One. Medical marijuana establishments shall be prohibited from being licensed and located within one thousand feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten and/or grades one through twelve. This distance shall be measured from the lot or parcel property line boundary of any school described above to the lot or parcel property line boundary of the medical marijuana establishment property at their closest points. Medical marijuana establishments shall be prohibited from being licensed and located within one thousand feet of a public library. This distance shall be measured from the lot or parcel property line boundary of any public library to the lot of the parcel property line boundary of the medical marijuana establishment property at their closest point. Three. All medical marijuana, I'm sorry, all marijuana shall be contained within the principal building and within the enclosed locked facility in accordance with MMFLA as applicable. Four. Marijuana establishment hours and days of operation may be limited by the city zoning ordinance as a condition of licensing, license approval. The establishment premises shall be open to the city for inspection during all licensed hours of operation. Five. The licensees shall report any other change in the information required by the city, by the charter, to the city clerk prior to the implement-
Can I have you start that again?
Did I mess that up?
Well, you read chapter as charter and it's-
Oh, okay. Five. Licensees shall report any other change in information required by this chapter to the city clerk prior to the implementation of the proposed change. Failure to do so may result in the suspension or revocation, revocation of the license. Six. Licensees shall provide to the city any change to the medical marijuana establishment that requires reporting to LARA under the requirements of PA two eight one. B. Provisioning center locating, location and operational requirements. One. Consumption of marijuana shall be prohibited on the premises of the provisioning center, and a sign shall be posted on the premises indicating that that consumption is prohibited on the premises. Two. Provisioning centers shall continuously monitor the entire premises on which they operate with surveillance systems that include security cameras and alarms. The establishment's point of contact key holder must respond promptly on-site to any alarms. The video recordings shall be maintained in a secure off-site location for a period of at least thirty days. Video recordings must be made available to law enforcement upon request if a possible crime is involved. Three. Unless permitted by the MMMA and Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act or applicable state law, public or common areas of the provisioning center shall be separated from the restricted or nonpublic areas of the provisioning center by a permanent barrier. Unless permitted by the MMMA and Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act or applicable state law, no marijuana is permitted to be stored, displayed, or transferred in an area accessible to the general public. Four. All marijuana storage areas within the provisioning center must be separated from any customer, patient areas by a permanent barrier. Unless permitted by the MMMA and Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act or applicable state law, no marijuana is permitted to be stored in an area accessible by general, the general public or registered customers, patients. Marijuana may be displayed in a sales area only if permitted by the MMMA or Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act. Five. Provisioning center hours of operation open to the public shall be limited to between eight AM and ten PM, seven days a week. Provisioning centers, center hours of operation open to the public may be limited further as a condition of license approval. C. A nonrefundable annual fee shall be paid by each marijuana establishment licensed under this char, chapter in the amount as set by the city council and is listed in the city's fee schedule. Eight six zero point zero six. Requirements and procedures for use issuing license. A. No person shall operate a marijuana facility within the city without a valid marijuana facility license issued by the city pursuant to the provisions of this chapter and state law. B. The license requirement in this chapter applies to all facilities, whether operated for profit or nonprofit, or not for profit. C. Every applicant for a license to be operated, to operate a marijuana facility shall file an application in the clerk's office upon a form provided by the city. The information required for the application shall not impose qualifications for the issuance of a medical marijuana establishment license that conflict with the MMFLA or rules promulgated by the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, MRA. A complete application for a license require, under this, required under this chapter, shall be made under oath and shall include all of the following information and any required attachments listed on the form. One. Business information, including the name, physical address, and parcel numbers, number or numbers, zoning district, mailing address if different from the physical address, phone number, building area, number of employees, and stated hours of operation. Two. Applicant information, including the name, address, phone number, email, and date of birth and the, for, birth. Four. Highest level official or employee of the establishment to serve as the city's point of contact. This includes a copy of the applicant's state or federal issued photo identification and applicant's state of Michigan prequalification status letter. Three. Operator information, if different from the applicant, the applicant information shall be provided for the individual or individuals responsible for day-to-day operations. Four. License information concerning if the applicant and/or operator has been denied an application or license for a marijuana establishment in any other jurisdiction and the reasons why, or if the applicant and/or operator has had a marijuana establishment license suspended or revoked in any other jurisdiction and the reasons why, and the subsequent business activity or occupation of the applicant and/or operator subsequent to such action or suspension or revocation.
Mindy, do you want to take over?
Sure.
Thank you, Bob.
Five. Property owner information, including the name, primary residence address, phone number, real property interest in the medical marijuana establishment, and all tenants, and their legal interests described in detail. This includes proof of ownership or a copy of the lease. If the premise is to be purchased by the applicant, proof of an executed purchase agreement contingent on approval for desired use. If the premises are leased, written permission from the owner of the premises for the medical marijuana establishment shall be included. Six. Facility information, including the status of an alarm system with the alarm company name and contact information including, included. Required facility information includes the following. One. Proof of insurance for fire damage and the amount of, the value of the premises and liability insurance with the minimum limits of five hundred thousand dollars listed in the city, listing the city as an additional insured. Two. Description of storage facilities for all marijuana to be stored on-site. Three. Description of security plan for the facility, including but not limited to lighting, alarms, barriers, recording, and monitoring cert devices and security guard arrangements. Four. Copy of special use permit application submitted to, in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Five. A list of any material, safety data sheets for all nutrients, pesticides, and other chemicals proposed for use in the facility. Six. Description and plan of all equipment and methods proposed to stop any impact or to adjacent uses, including enforceable assurance that no odor will be detectable from outside the establishment property. Seven. A plan for the disposal of any marijuana and related byproducts proposed to be used as the, as the establishment. Eight. Statement providing information regarding any other marijuana establishment facility licenses that the applicant and/or operator is authorized to operate in any other jurisdiction within the state or another state, and the applicant's involvement with each establishment facility. Seven. Oath of application provided on the application form. Eight. Release of liability indemnification and waiver provided on the application form. Nine. Applicants shall contain a clause requiring each applicant granted a license under the, this chapter to indemnify and hold harmless the city, its officers, agents, employees, and servants from all claims, suits, or actions of every name, kind, and description brought by the applicant for or on account of damages resulting from litigation pending current or future due to the denial of or revocation of a license granted hereafter, or any other loss or cost, including but not limited to that caused by the concurrent active or passive negligence- negligence of the city, its officers, agents, employees, or servants resulting from the granting or denial of a license under this chapter. D, applications to operate any marijuana facility shall include a photocopy of the state of Michigan pre-qualification status letter. Any application delivered to the city without the aforementioned pre-qualification status letter will be deemed incomplete and shall be rejected. Any delay due to the filing of an incomplete application shall be deemed the fault of the applicant and not the city. E, upon an applicant's completion of said form and furnishing of all required information and documentation, city staff shall receive the application and assign it to a unique application identifier based on the date and time of receipt. The city staff shall act to approve or deny an application as fully complete no later than five business days from the date the application was received.
Would you like Larry to take over?
Yes.
The applicant's receipt of a conditional license from the city shall provide for a reasonable time but not more than 12 months to secure any and all subsequent and/or collateral permits as required by the state and/or the city. Any applicant with a conditional license and has not completed every task as required by the state and/or the city 12 months after receiving the conditional license from the city will result in revocation of the applicant's city-issued conditional license and denial of license. Excuse me. One, an extension of time may be granted upon the applicant's written request and showing a good cause for delay. A request for an extension of time shall also include the estimated time to remedy the delay. An extension of time shall be made at the sole discretion of the city. G, within 20 business days from the applicant submitting proof of obtaining all other required permits and approvals and payment of the license fee, city staff shall approve or deny the marijuana facility license. H, maintaining a valid marijuana facility license issued by the state is a condition for the issuance and maintenance of a marijuana facility license under this chapter and continued operation of any marijuana facility. I, marijuana facility license issued under this chapter is exclusive to the licensee and facility location and may be transferable or relocated if all of the following are met. One, the licensee submits to the city clerk a written request to transfer license or relocate indicating current licensee location and proposed licensee location. Two, the proposed license meet all of the conditions for obtaining a license under this chapter. Three, proposed licensee or current licensee with a new location delivers the application fee in full as required by Perry City Ordinance 860.03.D. Four, proposed licensee or current licensee with a new location submits a complete license application as required by this chapter. And five, as soon as reasonably possible after the city clerk is in receipt of the affirmation item, licensees request to transfer a license issued under this chapter to a different location or individual or entity shall be reviewed by council. At the sole discretion and satisfaction of the council, the transfer shall be approved by resolution. After council's resolution granting the approval, the transfer or relocation will not be completed until all state requirements are fulfilled. The attempted transfer, sale, or other conveyance of an interest in a license without resolution approving transfer by the council is grounds for suspension or revocation of the license. 860.07, License Renewal. A, a marijuana facility license shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance unless revoked as provided by law. B, a valid marijuana facility license may be renewed on an annual basis by submitting an application and payment of the annual license fee. Application to renew a marijuana facility license shall be filed at least 30 days prior to the date of its expiration. C, applications for renewal or amendment of an existing permit shall be reviewed and granted or denied before applications for new permits are considered. 860.08, Applicability. The provisions of this chapter shall be applicable to all persons' facilities described herein where the operations or activities associated with a marijuana facility were established without authorization before the effective date of this chapter. 860.09, Penalties and Enforcement. A, any person who violates any of the provisions of this chapter shall be responsible for a municipal civil infraction. Each day a violation this chapter continues to exist constitutes a separate violation, and violator of this chapter shall also be subject to such additional sanctions, remedies, and judicial orders as are authorized under Michigan law. B, a violation of this chapter is deemed to be a nuisance per se. In addition to any other remedy available by law, the city may bring an action for an injunction or other process against a person to restrain, prevent, or abate any violation of this chapter. C, this chapter shall be enforced and administered by the city official as may be designated from time to time by resolution of the city council. Actions to address a violation of this chapter are detailed in Chapter 2.02.99 of the city's codified ordinances. D, a license issued under this chapter may be suspended or revoked for any of the following violations. One, any person required to be named on the permit application is convicted or found responsible for violating any provisions of this chapter. Two, a permit application contains any misrepresentation or omission of material fact or faults or misleading information or other applicant or the applicant has provided the city with any other faults or misleading information related to the facility. Three, any person required to be named on the permit application is convicted of a crime which if it had occurred prior to the symbol of the application could have caused for denial of the permit application. Four, marijuana is dispensed on the business premises in violation of this chapter or other applicable state or local law, rule, or regulation. Five, the facility is operated or is operating in a violation of the specifications of the permit application, any conditions or approval by the city, or other applicable state or local law, rule, or regulation. Six, the city, the county, or other governmental entity with jurisdiction has closed the facility temporarily or permanently or has issued a sanction for failure to comply with other health and safety provisions of this chapter or other applicable state or local laws related to public health and safety. Seven, the facility is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance. Eight, the facility's state operating license has been suspended or revoked. Nine, a defensive odor is determined to be emanating from the facility. The city official confirmation condition is required. E, possession, sale, or consumption of any form of alcohol is strictly prohibited in any licensed medical marijuana facility. 860.10, Servability. In the event that any one or more sections, provisions, phrases, or words of this chapter shall be found to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the enforceability of the remaining sections, provisions, phrases, or words of this chapter. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from date of publication.
Thank you all for reading. I am looking for a second.
Second.
The motion then made by Larry has been seconded by Steve in regard to placing this ordinance amendment on our next agenda for possible adoption. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you all for your help and patience with that. And thank you, Ordinance Committee, for all of your time and work with everything. It was a lot.
They did a good job.
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
Any other business that may come before council? Now, Mindy, you can put your words together and make a motion if you're so inclined in regard to the display request, permission to display request from the new owner of the hardware at 156 North Main Street.
I was busy and I didn't put anything.
You don't put your words together. Steve, what do you think? And we don't have to do it tonight if you want to, it's up to you guys.
I'll leave this up for amending my motion. I move that we allow the new owners of the hardware to have an outdoor display as long as it conforms with Section 808 of our ordinance.
Second. Great. Yeah, sometimes.
The only thing I would amend that is that I would like to see palletized bagged palletized material on the north side of the building of that sidewalk and not along Main Street.
Yep.
Do you support that?
Yes, yes, please.
Motion made by Steve, seconded by...
And you supported the change?
Mindy? Okay. Amended by Bob, which was approved by Steve and okayed by Mindy.
And I just recorded it, guys. You'll figure it out later.
You got to record it.
I do.
And Steve put his words together so nicely.
Yes, he did. All those listening to the motion that are in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great. Thank you for that. Any council discussions and observations? Do we have any public comment? I don't think we had anybody come in. Council? I would just once again observe how well you guys work together, you support each other, and it really makes working together for the betterment of our community a joy. It really does. Thank you for that.
That's all the difference.
It does. What about items for our next agenda? Does anyone have anything they want to ask to have on our next agenda?
Your ordinances, of course.
Yes, the ordinances for approval. They don't need to be read again, just so you know. I feel bad, I'm sorry. We're not gluttons for punishment. No, it's okay.
I'd be absent for approval. I'm kidding.
I think I mentioned it before, but I've lined up Genevieve Cottrell to come in and give us an update on the food bank.
Okay, good.
I know that's not the official term, but...
We know what it means. Anything else? Then I think we're good for now. We will adjourn at 8:45.